Good evening, I'm going to call to order the Sparks Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, January 3rd, and we're going to start with roll call.
Commissioner VanderWiel?
Here.
Commissioner Carey?
President.
Commissioner Brock?
Here.
Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Peterson?
Here.
Commissioner Reed?
Here.
Assistant Attorney Allison Condon?
Here.
Assistant Community Services Director Alonzo Ratt?
Here.
Thank you, next we'll move to public comment, this is loud, and this is for an item either on the agenda or not, so, do I have any requests to speak?
Any more.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll move to approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair, all forty-seven minutes, or, I'm sorry, the agenda looks fine to me, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you Commissioner Carey, can I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Peterson, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next we'll move along to approval of the minutes for December 4th, the Planning Commission's study session. Commissioner Carey?
Thank you Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the December 4th Planning Commission's study session minutes.
I'll second.
Commissioner Peterson, thank you, so I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next move for a review and possible approval of the minutes for December 6th Planning Commission meeting?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion this time.
Thank you Commissioner Peterson. Okay, so I have a first.
I'll second that.
For December 6th.
Thank you Commissioner Blaco, so I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next we'll move along to announcements and committee reports.
Madam Chair, Armando Nellis, Assistant Community Services Director, staff has neither any announcements nor any committee reports.
Okay, thank you. Next we'll move along to informational items.
Yeah, Armando Nellis, staff has no informational items either.
Great, thank you. Next we'll move along to public hearing items, PCN 18-0057, consideration possible action for a conditional use permit. Karen Melby, thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. This item before you tonight was continued from December 6th, 2018 Planning Commission hearing. The January 3rd staff report and exhibit packet includes only the revised and new materials. Staff did not include the December 6th staff report or the exhibits, so that the Planning Commission can evaluate the new information. They are available on our website if anybody would like to look at the December 6th information. To recap, this request is a conditional use permit to allow a major recreational facility, specifically an outdoor concert amphitheater, to seat up to approximately eighty-six hundred people on a site approximately 2.25 acres in size located at 1040 Victorian Avenue. You can see on this exhibit, it's outlined in cyan, here's Victorian Plaza Circle and Victorian to the south with 10th Street to the east and C Street to the north. As a quick background, as shown in this aerial photograph, the proposed site was the former Bourbon Square Club, which was recently demolished. Silver Club operated on this site from 1983 to 2001, and then the Bourbon Square operated on the site from 2013 to 2015. This property is designated mixed-use district downtown Victorian Square zoning, of which major recreational facilities are permitted by conditional use permit in this zoning district, and entertainment uses are listed as an appropriate primary use on the sites within the downtown Victorian Square land use designation. This proposal would be limited to ten large events per year, including four to six concerts during the months of June through October. The proposed concert venue would also be used for proportions of existing special events such as the Rib Cook-Off, Spar Spangle Sparks, Hot Eggs Nights. Large concerts would be held during, would not be held during these special events, as the venue would be used in connection with these existing events. Tonight the Planning Commission is reviewing the use of the subject site as a major recreational facility. The approval of the conditional use permit, if approved by the Planning Commission, will be limited to the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday. No amplified sound may be used on Sundays or legal holidays. Additionally, amplified sound is restricted to no more than fifteen decibel DBAs above ambient sound level as measured at the property line. The event center would be used for events, or could be used for events, year-round if the operation complies with the above limitations. Only events permitted through the special event process, permit process, which is set forth in Sparks Municipal Code, Section 9.34, will be permitted to operate beyond the scope of the regulations on amplified sound described above, and also addressing closing of streets. A concert event permitted through a special event permit can emit amplified sounds up to the 10:00 p.m. Special event permits are subject to the City of Sparks Recreation, Parks and Recreation, these are submitted to that, Parks and Recreation. These applications are reviewed by the city's parks, fire department, police department, and community services. The staff meet to address public safety concerns and to determine the level of involvement necessary for the event. Once the city's involvement is established and is estimated cost of city services provided for the event to be paid by the event producer. The Parks Department does notice the surrounding neighborhood for large events. The Parks Department sends out a postcard to the residents from Pyramid Highway, I mean Pyramid Way to 15th Street, so that would be from here to, I'm sorry, 13th, so it would be two more blocks to the west, and then from Victorian to Prater, they notice. On these postcards, they list the concert times if there are concerts, the road closures, and they also provide a 24-hour phone line if there are issues for people to call in. Francine Burge with Special Events is in the audience if you would like, if you have direct questions for her, she's available. Since December 6th Planning Commission hearing, the applicant has submitted a revised plan. This is the revised plan, which shows that the stage is on the west side, and the seating now is on the east side of the site. The new site plan does not change the primary access, the access, primary access are still off of the plaza kind of large sidewalk of Victorian, and, which is about thirty feet wide. The staff has identified the following issues or concerns with the operation of the event center. First would be the fencing of this property. The site will be bounded on all four sides, so it would be all these sides here, by a six-foot wall constructed of decorative concrete panels or masonry block. The top two feet of the wall may be decorative metal or wrought iron with metal meshing on the backing. Gates must be constructed of decorative metal or wrought iron with also a metal mesh backing. Other materials may be approved by the police department, the administrator, or the administrator, which is condition nine. Addressing lighting, which is condition eleven. Lighting shall comply with the Sparks Municipal Code .04 .007, which requires a photometric plan submitted as part of a building permit process. A photometric plan demonstrates that the foot candles, which is the measurement of light, are nearly zero at the property line. Condition eleven also addresses laser light shows, spotlights, or other specialty lighting associated with the performance, that is, and it cannot shine onto the neighboring properties or buildings. Large video screens may, are likely to be used during the events of a concert. Any such screens must comply with Sparks Municipal Code 20.04 .010, Section L6, which is our digital sign regulations in the sign code, and any displays, screens must be, in association with the concert, must be turned off at the end of the performance. Addressing public safety. Exiting, in the case of an emergency, is a specific concern to our police department. Condition of seven allows for the police and fire chiefs to review and approve any emergency egress that would likely impact the fencing. The main entrances will be right here, they have main exiting gates here, some on the east side and also on the west side, be underneath the grandstands will be an exit. All of that will be reviewed more in detail by the police and fire department at the time when they submit for their site improvement plans. Sanitation, which is condition ten, restricts the portable restroom facilities, which they are proposing to locate in each corner of the property, to be delivered no more than three days prior and must be removed two days after an event. Also, trash must be removed and the site cleaned up no more than two days after the event. Point, and then sewer, again, the portable restrooms right now on the four corners of the property. The applicant would like to eventually build permanent restroom facilities on the site, and condition eight requires that a sanitary sewer infrastructure analysis be submitted by the applicant for approval by the city engineer prior to the construction of any permanent restroom facilities due to the intermediate, intermediate yet intense flows that are associated with the events. The city right-of-way, let me go down to that exhibit, you can see the gray area here, this is the property that is within the city's right-of-way. They are, condition twelve addresses this, that they would have to get an exclusive permission for the, to occupy this right-of-way, and we have included as part of the application and owner's affidavit signed by the city manager saying, to include in the packet. So, there's been acknowledged by the city that we would allow them to use this area. Parking, this is the exhibit provided by the applicant, the proposed parking, proposed parking in their parking analysis is approximately three times as is much required by our zoning code. As shown in these blue bubbles here, these are the parking that the Nugget has available. They have 2,472 existing parking spaces available. Condition four requires that the operation of the events center comply with the parking as presented in the traffic work study. The traffic plan, this was a plan that, where they provided, that the, showing which streets would be closed, they anticipate to close Victorian between Victorian Plaza Circle and 10th Street, and then also, now with the stage on this side, it's anticipated that there'd be some closures on Victoria Plaza Circle. Previously it was on 10th Street, now they're proposing to do, would be proposed to be on this side. The special event permit will require, based on the anticipated attendance and the nature of the individual event, would be reviewed by community services, the park, the fire and police department, and that's under condition six. One of the biggest concerns is the amplified sound impacts on the surrounding property. The applicant submitted an acoustical study dated November 16th, 2018, based on the previous site plan. At the December 6th hearing, Planning Commission meeting, staff recommended the Planning Commission continue consideration of this agenda item to January 3rd today, to provide staff time to obtain a review of an acoustical study submitted by the applicant and Silverwing Development, who is the owner of the adjacent properties. The review conducted by Ballard Acoustical Consultants is attached to your, into the packet. That study is estimated that based on the volumes of ninety DBAs plus fifty percent crowd noise, that the sound levels at the exterior of the wall nearest residential, which would be the bridges to the east here, I mean west, I'm sorry, would be ninety to ninety-five DBAs, range and have an impact of ten to twelve DBs above the ambient sound levels within the residence in the bridges. The applicant's acoustical study stated that this impact would be noticeable. The city hired an acoustical accountant, Ballard Acoustical Consultants, Inc., again, which is our Exhibit B, or the peer review, to review the Paloletti Acoustical Study, as well as an acoustical analysis performed by, as public comment on the project by Silverwing Development. The peer review states that the loud rock concert, rock tend to be an average expected sound level of a hundred DBA, with spikes ranging from a hundred and five to a hundred and ten DBA, which is addressed as the worst-case scenario in the applicant's study. This is, when that stage was on the east side, this is the Paloletti study. So, this amplifies music at a hundred DBAs, which is what the more conservative is, shown in this exhibit. The estimated noise levels at the bridge is ninety-five to a hundred DBA. The peer review estimates the noise levels would average about seventy DBA with approximately twenty-five DBA over expected base noise levels of forty-five DBA in the units when concerts are not occurring. The peer review characterizes a twenty-five decib, DBA increase during concert events as an approximately five-fold increase over the interior ambient sound levels within those units. The peer review concluded that with sound levels inside the residence of seventy DBA, occupants would be impacted during the concerts with activities such as verbal communication, watching TV, and sleeping would all be substantially or adversely affected. With the new site plan of the stage on the east side, which is this graphic, the seating would be facing the west, the applicant submitted a revised acoustical study also prepared by Paloletti Consulting, and that was dated December 19th, 2018, and is Exhibit 8.3 within your packet. The revised analysis reflects the change to the site plan, orienting the concert stage to the, face east rather than the west. Reorientation of the site is suitably, substantially beneficial, because it shifts the most pronounced sound impacts towards a building, which Silverwing's development, the DECO apartments, is still under construction, providing the developer an opportunity to further so improve their units. The updated Paloletti study indicates the sound levels at the facade of the DECO structure to be ninety-five to a hundred DBA. Sound levels now at the bridges building, which are the ones to the west here, this would be the DECO here, however, would be substantially reduced by the new orientation to about eighty to eighty-five DBAs for amplified sound, and that's using a hundred DBAs at the mixing board. Based on the peer review conducted by Ballard Acoustical Consultants, both the Paloletti study underestimated the potential sound levels and sounds used in the, at a hundred decibels at the soundboard. This is what the staff report analyzed, is based on. Mr. Paul Ballard is present tonight to address any questions or comments that you may have. There are five associated findings with the conditional use, I will go through these findings right now, let me go back to the overall site plan. Finding C1, which is the request as submitted in condition is compliance with the comprehensive plan. The use of the site as a major recreational facility or concert venue would permit an activity that is not currently available within the city of Sparks at this scale. As a non-residential land use that also diversifies the economy of Sparks, this proposed use supports goals MG1, goal MG2, policy CC2, and goal EV1. The proposed concert amphitheater would be located within Downs Pond Sparks. The current building has been demolished and replaced with a facility that represents considerable reinvestment in the Victorians Avenue corridor. In support of goal MG4, goal MG5, and policy MG12. As this site redevelops into a concert venue, the adjacent sidewalks and pedestrian infrastructure will be maintained and enhanced in support of policy C4. All required city services necessary for development in the site as a concert amphitheater are available at the site, and that's in with conformance of policy CF1. Though, as mentioned earlier, improvements to the sewer infrastructure may be required when the temporary restroom facilities are replaced with a permanent restroom facility. Addressing finding C2, which is, requires the request to be compatible with the existing or permitted uses of the adjacent property. This site is in downtown Sparks, that is surrounded by a mix of commercial and residential uses, and is in our downtown Victorian Square area of the mixed-use district, where a high-level activity is encouraged and desired. The area already hosts a number of major events such each year, including events that are of similar or large scale like the Rib Cook-Off. A concert venue of this size will be a major attraction, increased activity at the concert events would have a positive impact on the neighboring businesses on event day, particularly eating and drinking establishments. As discussed in finding C1 above, adding an entertainment venue like the one proposed for the site clearly consists with and would advance numerous comprehensive plan goals and policies. It is also clear that the proposed concert venue will generate noise, light, traffic, and parking impacts as discussed in the analysis section, which the conditions of approvals are intended to mitigate. The impacts of the adjacent residential land uses, specifically sound and noise, are one major concern. The proposed conditions of approval seek to reduce these impacts, in particular by imposing a limit of ten major events per year, exclusive of our existing major events such as the Rib Cook-Off, Spar Spangle Sparks, and Hot Eggs Nights. In addition, the special event permit process will allow the city staff to manage concerns on an iterative or case-by-case basis as events occur, refining requirements and mitigation measures as necessary based on previous events. Addressing finding C3, which is the impairment of natural resources. This site has been developed, was developed by the Silver Club in 1983. The redevelopment of this site as a concert venue will not impair any natural resources. Addressing finding C4, which is addressing identifiable impacts. The impacts relating to sound, sanitation, portable restrooms or permanent restrooms, fencing, parking, lighting, and appearance and design were addressed earlier in my presentation. The proposed conditions of approval are intended to mitigate these potential impacts. While the proposed use may result in significant impacts to the surrounding properties, particularly with respect to noise, the duration of East Camp Concert is limited to a few hours and is subject to either an 8:00 p.m. or 10:00 p.m. end time for the amplified sound. The latter would be under a special event permit, approval. The number of new events is limited to the maximum of ten per year. With these proposed constraints and taking into account the reduced noise impacts resulting from the reorientation of the concert stage now on the west side, staff believes that the proposed event center and concert venue is compatible with the other uses located within the city's most intense mixed-use zoning district. Addressing finding C5, which is public notice. Public notice was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal on November 21st, 2018. There were sixty-three notices mailed to the property and was within 500 feet of the site on November 20th. The Planning Commission meets, functions as a requirement for the public hearing of this item. It is important to note that the Planning Commission is approving the use of the major recreational facility, the event center. However, Sparks Municipal Code 9.4202OB allows the applicant to operate outside these limitations if there is an approved special event permit. Specifically, the applicant is exempt from Chapter 9.42 if they have a special event permit pursuant to Chapter 9.34 Special Events. Staff believes that the five findings can be met and recommends approval with twelve conditions. This does conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have any questions at this moment? Okay, is the applicant here, would they like to make a presentation? Okay.
Good evening, Anthony A. Martin L. III for the record, owner of the Sparks Nugget. I don't have anything left to say, she took all the words right out of my mouth. I guess I would start off by thanking the city, Armando, and the staff, as well as Jay Witt with Silverwing Development, and I think we've worked together to come up with a great resolution and mitigate any concerns that he had, as if I recall, he was the only person at the last meeting that shared some significant concerns, and like I told you, no matter how it came out, we'd still be friends in the end, and we're still friends today, and I think we've worked it out, and I really appreciate him being here tonight, and I appreciate his support and flexibility in coming to the resolution, because I think that was the biggest issue, and I'm happy with the plan that we have. The only other condition that was read that, as I read some of the final languages, it's going back and forth tonight, is understanding and working with the city police on the fencing plan. I have caution and concern that if we do too much, we might make this look like a prison from the outside, and that's not the intent, the intent's to make it look inviting, but we will, we will adhere and heed to whatever their requirements are, but we would like the opportunity to sit down and work with them, to come up with, with something that would be aesthetically pleasing, but also satisfy all the security concerns. So I think that's the way the condition reads, but I just would like to have that opportunity to sit with them, so. I can take you through the whole presentation again if you'd like, it's the same one we did the last time, or I can be quiet and turn it back over to you.
Do any commissioners want to see the presentation again? Okay, you're off the hook. Do any commissioners have any questions of the applicant? Commissioner Carey?
Yeah, I was wondering if you could kind of run through, for the record, the decision to change the direction of the sign, or the, the stage.
Run through the, how we did it, or why we did it?
Yeah, why you, why you did it.
The, the original issue with it was with, when the sun went down, and not having it in people's eyes, so when we flipped it and we did a further sun study, we, we recognized that that wasn't going to be a problem. Sometimes when you bring the artist in, if you get an hour and a half show and you get an opener, you know, the opener can last sometimes longer than you want, so sometimes it might say you might have to start the show at 7:45, you know, to, so those were the concerns that we had had, so that was one, and I think that we're, we're comfortable with the artist, that we can mitigate that and deliver the right show and be, be done on time. The second thing was in working with Jay, we realized the building that's under construction, that we can do some mitigation to that building with some extra soundproofing, you know, to make it even better, I think, than the sound study will show, for those residents to ensure their experiences is what he wants it to be for the product he's putting on, and so that was really the two things that, and it kept the entry where it needed to be, and then the city, you know, helped with the, I don't know what you call it, the authorization or approval to use that corner. Without that corner, we wouldn't, we just couldn't get it to fit. corner, we wouldn't, we just couldn't get it to fit. And it made sense because it's not being used for anything else anyway. So it seemed like all three parties came together, and it was a good solution.
Yes, Commissioner Peterson?
I have a question. Commissioner Peterson, on that first proposal you came in a couple of weeks back with us on, did you have a continuous wall surrounding that location?
No. Originally, we had had a wrought iron fence that was to city code. It was going to look nice, but it was a wrought iron fence. And then it's changed to maybe a block wall with wrought iron on top, four feet of block, two feet of wrought iron. And then on the wrought iron, though, you want a mesh on that, a metal mesh. So there's really no reason to do the wrought iron. We might as well build a six-foot-high black wall if we're going to. So there's some things that we've got to talk about aesthetically on how this looks, and then what the security concerns are, and if, are we really mitigating the security concerns by doing this? I mean, you're going to have a stadium that's wide open with thousands of people going in and out. We don't do this for ribs. We have five times as many people in the streets for ribs than we do the concert. We don't have any of these things. So we do the same thing for Hot August Nights. We do the same thing for Star Spangled Sparks, where we don't have these things. So I was trying to understand why these things were important for 8,500 if they're not important for 50,000. That was one of my biggest concerns. To try to, I haven't had the chance myself, but again, we'll adhere to whatever they want. And I didn't want to, it's not aesthetically pleasing when you look at it and it looks like a compound. It's supposed to look like an inviting environment. I think we can work through that design-wise and...
I understand the reason for it. I'm sure you can. As a related question, then, of course, all your entry gates will be secured and locked on non-event days, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the commissioners?
And it'll be patrolled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
Madam Chair, we have two requests.
Okay.
Slowly, I come down to this podium here. Jay Witt, Madam Chair, members of the council, the commission, president of Silverwing Development. I spoke before you some weeks ago regarding the issues here. We are supportive of the application at this point. The reorientation was a huge factor in that conclusion. The fact that the, as mentioned by Karen Mulby, that we have the opportunity to do sound mitigation, not just in the windows, but the walls of the deco, which we didn't have with the bridges, which it would frame as well, is a big, big factor here. Also, the height of that building, the fact the first four levels are, that sound is hitting is a garage and not units, whereas the other side, five levels, were units. So we're, you know, it's a dramatic difference for us. The only thing I would like to bring your attention to, and I've talked to Anthony about, and I mentioned it at the last meeting, was the issue of vagrancy on the site during down periods. I think Anthony was supportive of what I said at the last meeting, at least. He seemed to be when he spoke after I spoke, which is specifically that when the venue is not in use, that there'd be lighting in the venue below and above the seating. Otherwise, you're going to have vagrant issues. I could tell you, we're right now, and we haven't opened up the south building of bridges yet, and we had vagrant issues over the holidays quite a bit, even though we have ESI, we have two cars out there. So without that kind of attention, you're going to have even a larger issue. It sits between the bridges and deco. So if we create any sort of criminality in that area or dark zone, we're going to have a real problem in Victorian Square. So I asked for that. I think, secondly, just the posting of no trespassing, which shouldn't be a big deal, but allows you to basically remove vagrants from the facility if they're found. And lastly, that the Nuggets' security staff on some random basis every night drop by and just check on the property. With those things, we're very supportive of the project. There has been considerable adjustment that was worked on at the request of the commission, that we basically worked together. We did that after the meeting, and so I stand before you tonight in support of the application.
Thank you. Next, we have Ron King.
I'd like to ask.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. King. With that, are there any other requests to speak that didn't sign in that want to? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for questions, comments, motion. Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to hear from the sound consultant. I had some questions. Thank you for being here, and thanks for your peer review of the report. I had two questions with, related to sound. My first question, I'm trying to wrap my head around, you know, the impacts of the proposed use will be on the buildings to the east. We have the deco under construction, but there's also an existing commercial building of historic nature. So at the ground level, to the buildings directly to the east, so we're talking 95 DBA during a concert?
Yes. For the record, my name is Paul Ballard. I'm the president of Ballard Acoustical Consultants in our offices in Loomis, California. Yes, I reviewed the noise contour mapping that was done by Paeletti Consulting, and based on the contours that were shown that had the 100 dB source level, which I think is appropriate for this assessment. It looks like noise levels at the nearest building facades to the east would be on the order of 90 to 95 decibels.
So 90 is like a blender, right, in layman's terms? If you're like three feet away from a blender?
Yeah, that's probably not a bad analogy.
Okay. And then 100 would be like a gas lawnmower?
Yeah, depending on the type of mower. Yeah, that 100, to put it in perspective, if you think of it from an OSHA standpoint, if you had eight-hour exposure to a 90-decibel level, that would be considered a 100% dose. So four hours exposure to 95 or two hours of exposure to 100 is considered a 100% dose. So we're talking about fairly high levels, but these are very consistent. What was modeled by Paeletti were very consistent with monitoring efforts that we've done for major concert events just as recently as this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Their modeling results are very realistic.
My last question is, is about building vibrations with sound. And I don't know, I'm learning a lot here through this conditional use permit on sound. But is there an effect when, if we're talking 95 DBA to a building, does that have any kind of vibration on a building that could impair its structural integrity?
Yeah, let's take a second and talk about that. There's, when you think of vibration, there's two ways to think about it. One is groundborne vibration that is impacted, results from, say, pile driving, for example, where the strata between the source and the sensitive receptor is excited. The other is airborne vibration that's more the case what would occur here, where you've got speakers generating pressure waves that would impact the side of the buildings or windows. It may cause them to vibrate. So you'd get vibration of that nature. It's my understanding that the building that's to the south of the deco building is constructed of brick. The levels of vibration that are required to cause damage to structures, even sensitive or historic structures, is substantial, substantially higher than you would be expected to receive from an airborne sound like a concert. Even with high levels and low-frequency components from the base, it may cause some excitation of the windows, but you certainly would not expect any damage to structures, particularly of a brick-constructed building.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners, other commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, Madam Chair, Commissioner Fuenz, Paul, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me.
What is your experience on sound reflection on this facing east structure bouncing? It is going through a parking garage. Would there be quite a bit of sound reflection in that going back to the west or not, in your opinion?
Right. So reflection is a very real phenomenon. When a sound wave impacts a surface, the level of sound energy that's reflected is a function of the surface material, whether it's porous or whether it is not, if it's more reflective or more absorptive. Also, the angle of reflection is equal to the angle of incidence. For example, if the sound impacts the building at 45 degrees, it's going to be reflected at 45 degrees. So there will undoubtedly be some reflection off the building. If you have a perfect reflection, then you have a doubling of sound energy theoretically. If you're standing near the building and you're getting the direct sound and a 100% perfect reflection, you're really only looking at a 3 decibel increase in sound, though, because that's a doubling of sound energy. So even though the reflections are very real, you wouldn't expect it to translate into a substantial increase in noise levels more than on the order of 3 decibels, for example, even if you had a perfect reflection.
Thank you.
Are we good, commissioners? Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Does the commissioners have any other questions, comments? Commissioner Carey?
Couple of questions for staff. I'm wondering about policy CF1. We're talking about adequate city services. Is it staff's opinion that there will be adequate public safety services to meet the needs from the proposed venue?
Yes, that would be reviewed with each special event permit. It would be reviewed and be addressed. As I stated in the special event permit, that the staff, the city staff meets and looks at that and determines what level of involvement the city would be with that special event permit. And then if there are costs incurred, they would have to, the producer is responsible for paying those costs.
Okay. And along those same lines, with respect to CF1 and city services, can the city adequately administer successfully the additional special events that will be created from the proposed conditional use permit?
Mr. Arnell?
Or is that not CF1?
That's not CF1. CF1 is actually infrastructure kind of.
Infrastructure?
Yeah, not managing projects. It's more of an infrastructure issue.
Mr. Arnell?
Well, Armando Arnell, this is the community services director. I mean, I think to expound, I think obviously it addresses, or this is intended to address, infrastructure. But, you know, I think it does more generally cover other services, including public safety services in particular. And, you know, I'm going to say that, you know, there were certainly concerns on part of the police and fire departments with regard to the additional staffing necessary to produce additional events each year. You know, there's already a significant demand there. But at the end of the day, you know, the conclusion was that, you know, through the special event permit process, there would, you know, we would find a way to do that. You know, there may be arrangements that are different from those that we utilize today in terms of security in particular, for example. So I think, at the end of the day, if the, if the city is not in a position to provide the requisite services in order, necessary to approve a special event permit, then that special event permit won't be approved. It would be, I think, the logical conclusion.
Okay. And my last question, I just want to get this on the record, is, so there is an opportunity, the staff is saying with their recommendation here, that there could be an opportunity for mitigation for the deco building that's under construction, the new apartments coming in. But we are not proposing any mitigation for the existing businesses to the east of the proposed venue?
Go ahead. Well, so we're not proposing any specific mitigation other than what we've already discussed, and that is that the number of events is limited. The hours of operation for those events are limited. And, you know, by reorienting the facility to face east, we have reduced the number of residents in particular. The, you know, the building that you've expressed some concerns about, Commissioner Carey, is a commercial use. There are two businesses in there. You know, there will undoubtedly be some impacts of the nature that we've discussed. But overall, in the context of this location in our most intense mixed-use district, we felt that this was, you know, we reached a point where we felt we could recommend approval on that basis. As you move beyond those immediate two buildings, you know, the impacts are, in terms of amplified noise, are, you know, start to be reduced. You can see that in the charts that were provided by the Paeletti analysis. But, yeah, there are going to be some impacts, and it's not possible to mitigate all of those impacts.
Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners have any, Commissioner Fuenz?
Commissioner Fuenz, Karen, can you, on that site plan, and I know when we're going back to the vagrancy issue, the applicant has stated that they will patrol the area, and there were quite a bit of lights around the area. Is that something that we're going to need to condition in this, to have a certain amount of lighting so there is no dead, no light zone? Or do you feel confident with the, working with the applicant, that he will address those issues with the vagrancy on?
Well, we did propose, we do have a condition 13. If you would like to see that, I can hand that out. But we are proposing that on condition 13 would address site security, and it would say, "No trespassing signs shall be posted on the site, and the property owner shall be responsible to take appropriate actions, including but not limited to lighting and patrolling the site to eliminate vagrancy on the site." We were not proposing in this proposed language that we would address specifically the lighting. It would be more responsible as part of the review of the site improvements. Again, the lighting cannot project beyond, with the photometric plan cannot project beyond the property, so we would have to look at that within the part of reviewing the site improvement plans.
So when we, if we approve this, are we doing 12 conditions or 13?
Well, that would be up to your decision. But I did prepare, as a, basically in my back pocket, in case this question did come up, I did propose some wording for a 13th condition, and I can hand it out to you.
Thank you.
Has the applicant had a chance to look at the 13th condition?
Yes, I emailed it to them.
Does the applicant have any feedback regarding this condition?
I could just reread it. Yeah, I think we're fine with this, and I'm fine with what Jay proposed.
Okay, if you can state your name also for the record.
Anthony A. Marnell III for the record. I'm fine with the no trespassing signs. I'm fine with lighting, and I'm fine with patrolling the site. I think that there will be a balance of how much light, to your point, is in the site. And then I know what's going to happen when we light this up every night. The residents are going to want us to turn the lights off because the lights are going through their windows. So we'll just have to work together to light it appropriately to meet the vagrant concerns, but also make sure the residents are happy that they don't have stadium lights on every night. We're in. We'll do whatever is required to meet the condition and make everybody happy.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson?
I read that earlier. I'm a little sick.
Mr. Marnell, you may have to sit there for a minute.
On condition 13, it's all right with me, except for this one thing that Armando did point out. We cannot say, on the last sentence, say we cannot say to eliminate vacancies. We have to say reduced. There's no possible way you can eliminate vacancies. And in fact, as far as this whole 13 is concerned, this is just my opinion. I really don't see any need for this 13th condition because of the wall. It was restricting this great wall, and that's going to prevent a great many of these conditions we state here.
I'll yield to all of you. I mean, I look at it, it's our 2.25 acres to keep secure and keep vagrants out. That's going to be my job, and that's what you're going to hold me to, and we will do that. If that means posting a security guard there 24 hours a day, then that's what we'll do. I don't think that'll be required. So I'll yield to all of you on what you feel is the appropriate condition to keep the site lit, safe, to all of you on what you feel is the appropriate condition to keep the site lit, safe, and as vagrant-free as possible.
That's fine. Let's change that eliminate to restrict.
Restrict or reduce?
Reduce.
Reduce?
Any other questions? Commissioner Carey?
A comment. I certainly concur with Commissioner Peterson's concern about the language. I would maybe throw out there, as opposed to, we would just, we would delete on the last sentence, to eliminate vagrancy on the site, just delete that. So it'd be including but not limited to lighting and patrolling the site. I think it's clear on the record that we want to prevent vagrancy, but out of abundance of caution with that issue, I would suggest that you just eliminate, to eliminate vagrancy on the site.
Jay, is that okay with you? We're all aligned on this. I mean, we're working on it every day together, so.
Okay, we appreciate that. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Peterson?
If we have none more comment, I'd like to make a motion. I mean...
Okay, go right ahead.
And this would, the motion would include the 13?
Yes.
As the restricting the last sentence.
Okay.
Is that right? Okay, I move to approve the conditional use permit for CU 180013 associated with PCN 180057, adopting findings C1 through C5, and to the facts supporting these findings is set forth in the staff report and subject to the 13 conditions of approval.
Commissioner Reed, second.
Okay. All right. And then you are saying that we're stopping at patrolling the site? And on 13? I just want to make sure. Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, that'd be fine if, Mr. Carey, and that's fine with me. I got to suggest to you people that we, after all, look at who's behind this establishment, and look at how they take care and protect their other utilities in that area. I don't think we're going to have a bigger problem with them as far as keeping this place in compliance and secure.
Thank you, Mr.
Anyhow, that's my opinion. If you want to strike that last, what was, did you want to take out the...
Or we stop it, stop the sentence at patrolling the site?
Or restrict vacancies on the site. Yeah, we'll stop it at patrolling the site.
Thank you, Commissioner Peterson. Does the second concur?
Yes.
Okay, so I have a first and a second. Do we have any comments or questions? Any comments on this? Commissioner Peterson, I mean, Fuenz, sorry. I'm looking at him, and sorry.
We're similar in...
There you go.
Visually. But I just want to, I support this. I want to appreciate both parties that are contributing a lot of money to Downtown Sparks, that they came together and really come in. But I think it's going to have a really neat project, great area for downtown. I think it's going to be a great boost, and I want to just thank both you guys that you got together and worked it out. So I appreciate it, the work that you've done over the last two weeks.
Any other comments? Commissioner Carey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of comments for the record. This was a very challenging conditional use permit request to take a look at. You know, this is a very intense proposed use, and there are a lot of, you know, potential impacts to the area from it. I certainly appreciate the opportunity from staff to provide the noise information. I learned a lot about noise. I do have a concern about the impact that that noise may have on the existing businesses that we have directly to the east. I do have somewhat of a concern with the, you know, reorientating the sign or the stage to the east, but I certainly understand the reasoning behind that. I also had a concern with respect to, you know, providing city services, and I appreciate the information on the record provided by staff for that concern. I think, you know, this is essentially, if this motion goes through and the proposed venue is constructed, this will essentially double our special events in Downtown Sparks, which is a good thing. But I have a concern if the city services can be adequately met from a public safety standpoint, and then also from a special events perspective. We have a one-woman shop when it comes to special events. She's the best in the valley when it comes to that. But I think, you know, I would encourage the city leadership to take a look at dedicating additional resources to make sure we can adequately address future special events. But I think from a, you know, from a land use planning perspective, you know, obviously, I concur with staff's recommendation that this is a desired use within Downtown Sparks. From a tourism standpoint, there's going to be a lot of benefits. I know certainly that, you know, from working in Clark County, the impact that that venue has had on tourism in Laughlin, I think there can be a similar benefit in Spark. So I do concur with staff that this will help meet MG12, CC2, MG1, MG2, and MG4, and MG5. And I will be supporting the motion, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Commissioner Peterson?
Since we haven't taken a vote yet, I have one more comment. I was thinking about this, and I know we've held you up, and you wanted a June opening, if I remember right, when you were here last time.
Yes, sir.
Well, I got to thinking about this, and I'm sorry for the delay, but wouldn't it be absolutely wonderful if you could make it by the Fourth of July for your opening?
We'll make it for June.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, do I have any further comments? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, move along to general business, public comment. Do we have any requests to speak? Okay. Next, I'll move along to comments from the commissioners. Do I have any comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Commissioner Brock?
Can I get a second?
A second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.